Call this meeting to order. If you'd all rise, we'll start with prayer. Father in heaven, we're grateful that we're able to meet as a commission to discuss county business. Father, we're grateful for the ability to meet, to meet as free people and recognize that we often probably overlook those freedoms. And Father, we're grateful for that, grateful for this great country, grateful for all the things that it makes available to us as its citizens. Father, we're grateful for our first responders in our county. We're grateful for our sheriff's department, for our fire department, and all the efforts that they make, the service that they provide to our citizens. Father, we'd ask that thy protecting hand will be with them and over them, and your spirit will be with them to keep them protected as they serve the citizens of our county. Father, bless us as a commission to make decisions that are pleasing unto thee and good for the people of our county. Father, we recognize that all that we have comes from thee when we say these things in Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Commissioner Lanier, will you get some pledges?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Looks like we start out with some recognition. The Government Finance Officers Association awards to the San Juan County Finance Department. Presentation only. Mr. Stark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to start off by actually having the finance team come up if they could make their way up to the podium.
Don't be shy. I know there's no tin key up here.
Just don't ask us to do math in our.
The Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, GFOA, has awarded San Juan County the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, Popular Annual Financial Reporting Award, and Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. This makes the 18th year that the county has received the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report Award, the fourth year for the Popular Annual Financial Report, and the 16th year for the Distinguished Budget Presentation. These awards represent a significant achievement to the county. To achieve these awards, San Juan County must satisfy all applicable accounting and reporting standards, as well as nationally recognized presentation guidelines. Upon each submission, the ACV, the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and Budget, are regularly reviewed by multiple GFOA reviewers who grade the county's performance and determines if the county should receive an award for additional year. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting. Only four of the 33 counties received the Annual Financial Comprehensive Report Award. Three of the 33 received the Popular Annual Financial Award, and only five of the 33 counties received the budget award on the most recent data made available to us by GFOA. GFOA also designates entities that receive all three of these awards as a triple crown winner. And this makes the fourth consecutive year that San Juan County has won this designation, as one of three New Mexico counties, and one of six, only six local governments in the entire state of New Mexico that have received this distinction. This recognition is viewed as a positive factor by credit rating agencies, state oversight agencies, and the constituents of the county. It is through collective dedication and hard work of all the finance team members and all the contributions from our elected offices and departments here that follow the county's policies and procedures to make certain that we can provide ongoing financial records that are accurate, reliable, and reported at the highest level. So with that, I'd like to recognize Kim Mark and the entire finance department on this fantastic achievement.
Thank you very much. And we couldn't do it without all of the department heads and the elected officials in the elected offices, because it takes us all as a team to make it all work and get all the information. We need to be able to pull it all together to send it off. So we think the entire county, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Picture?
Yeah.
Yep. We don't have the specific awards.
Well, they're there.
They're on the wall.
They just send us little medallions now, so.
They're still all up for a picture, though.
Yeah, most definitely.
Picture.
Jim, we're gonna get these. We're just gonna pull them off the wall.
Oh, there we go. Oh, just some. Okay, I got it.
Everybody got our big smiles right here. We're gonna take a couple, so just keep smiling. You're good at this. Good practice. Thank you so much. Couple more. Very nice.
Thank you for the.
I know I say it every year, but we expect it again next year. So. All right. That brings us into our regular meeting. I have an agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, there are none. As presented.
I move that we approve the agenda as written.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Not hearing any opposition, I presume it passed unanimously. Brings us to our consent agenda. Item number one, consideration of the regular meeting minutes from November 12th, 2024. Number two, consideration of the finance check registers from November 2024. Number three, consideration of treasurer check register for November 2024. Consideration of fiscal year '25 budget adjustment. Number seven, resolution number 242544. Number five, consideration of LDWI grant agreement amendment number one to the county DWI program. Number 25-d-g-24 for additional allocation for the fiscal year 2025. Number six, ratification of EMS Fund Act application for EMS station number six. Item number seven, consideration for renewal of bid number 232408. Price agreement of Hot Mix Asphalt to CNE Concrete Inc. of Flora Vista, New Mexico, and Old Castle Southwest Group of Farming Tons in New Mexico. Those in favor of, or actually, I'll stand for a motion because I'm jumping the gun.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Presume it passed unanimously, as there's no opposition. Brings us to new business. Number one, consideration of proclamation declaring December 17th, 2024 as Wes Willet's Day in San Juan County, New Mexico, presented by Chief Vega. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, and good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to come before you today. This is a big day for us as we get to honor and recognize the services of a very dedicated volunteer, and one that I might add that I'm gonna be very sad to see retire from our organization. But before I get started, I want to acknowledge some special guests that are with us tonight that came up from Santa Fe with us. We have our state fire marshal, Chief Rela. Chief, thank you. Deputy State Fire Marshal, Chief Leva, and our fire service coordinator, Andrew Montoya. We appreciate them for making the trip up from Santa Fe to be with us tonight, and we're honored to have them. As I mentioned, I'm coming here tonight to honor the services of Wes Willetts. Wes has hit 50 years of dedicated service to not only the citizens of San Juan County, but to San Juan County Fire and Rescue. And I want to state that again, 50 years of service. I might add that that's a little bit longer than I have been on anyone's radar. So the fact that Wes has been doing this a little bit longer than I've been here on this earth is quite astonishing. There's no doubt in my mind that he's probably forgotten more about the fire service than I've known to this point. And he means a great deal to me as a testament to the individual that he is. Firefighters give out nicknames, and the way you earn a nickname is usually by screwing up something. Wes has affectionately earned the nickname and the title of Uncle Wes. And the reason he's called Uncle Wes is because of that admiration that not only I, but the entire organization has for him. He's a teacher, he's a mentor, he's a friend, and as I mentioned, we're gonna be very sad to see him go. And we wish him and his wife many blessings in their new adventure, as they likely head to Texas sometime in the new year. But we're sad to see him go. So when we found out Wes was retiring, we said, hey, we've given him axes, we've given him fire buckets, we've given him bugles, all the traditional fire service awards. What do we give someone that has given our community 50 years of service? And again, I just want to reiterate, that's not 50 years of service, to put it in a sports analogy. That's not 50 years of service riding the bench. That's 50 years of being on the varsity team. So I could think of no greater honor than to come before the commissioner day and seek your approval to proclaim this day as Wes Willetts' Day. And with the chairman's permission, I'd like to read the proclamation, or if you'd like to, sir?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
Thank you. Commission, I'd like to present the following proclamation to you, proclaiming December 17th, 2024 as Wes Willetts' Day in San Juan County, New Mexico. Whereas Wes has devoted 50 years of exemplary service to San Juan County Fire and Rescue, demonstrating an unwavering commitment to protecting lives, property, and the citizens of San Juan County. And whereas during his 50 years of dedicated service, has held the positions of firefighter, lieutenant, captain, wildland engine captain, assistant district chief, and district chief. And whereas Wes Willetts has tirelessly responded to emergencies from structure fires to medical calls, rescues, and more, continually serving with honor, courage, and compassion, earning the trust and respect of his colleagues and the community members. And whereas Wes Willetts has been a mentor to countless younger firefighters, imparting wisdom, knowledge, and experience while embodying the highest standards of the firefighting profession. And whereas Wes Willetts has been the recipient of numerous fire department awards. And whereas the milestone of 50 years is a rare and remarkable achievement deserving the recognition and admiration for its testament to Wes's selflessness, resilience, and commitment to the fire service. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of San Juan County, New Mexico, that December 17th, 2024, and each December 17th thereafter shall be known and celebrated as Wes Willetts' Day. Thank you.
Thank you. So how many people get to 50 years? How rare is this?
Not many. I was talking to the state fire marshal as he came in, and Chief Rela said there's one or two, chief, that we know of in the state of New Mexico. So when I say rare and remarkable, it truly is. This is the first that I've ever seen in my career of having someone go 50 years. And I can tell you, in the future, likely not to be too many people that are able to do what Wes has done.
That's amazing. Does anybody have any questions, comments?
I'll stand for a motion. I move that we make this Wes Willetts' Day, December 17th, 2024, and every December 17th thereafter.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Can we have?
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I would like to invite our state fire marshal up to say a few words with the chairman and the commission's permission. And I think he has a couple items that he'd like to pass on to Wes. If I could get Wes and the state fire marshal to both come up, please.
Absolutely.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. It's an honor to be here today, Chief Vega, to present this 50-year award certificate to Wes. I think in Dantugue and Chief Vega, we've only had two or three in the state of New Mexico that have made it 50 years as a volunteer. So with this, I'd like to present a 50-year certificate, one of our patches, a challenge coin, and appreciation, and thank you for your service from the state fire marshal's office and the state of New Mexico.
Everybody coming out, I mean, you know, I set this up as a goal, a long-term goal. And really, my body has stayed with me, which is shocking, hard on me with what I do day in and day out. My full-time job was heavy equipment hauler, but part-time going into structures, vehicle extrications, all that stuff, it takes a toll on your body. And it really surprises me that it stayed with me. It really has. I mean, I'm thankful for it.
Wes, would you do this, the honor, just acknowledging your wife, who she is, and behind every good, if you're a 50-year member, is her wife, so?
Very true. This is my wife, Diane. She's been in the back, and she's really supported us much, all the calls that we make, middle of the night, she's been there to support. I'm very thankful.
Uncle Wes, can we have a picture with you?
I don't mind pictures at all. I mean, kind of skitching it in the granite. It doesn't go away.
All right, let's smile, everybody. Obviously, we're gonna do this a few times. Just keep smiling. Gotta use two kids, right?
Yep.
You guys have what you need? All right, smiles again, please. One more. There you go. Very nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item is item number two, consideration of resolution number 242541, proclamation honoring the Bloomfield High School football team, the 2024 4A state champions. And I think what we'll do is we'll have Coach Kovacs and his team come on in. To the front of the house, from the back of the house to the front of the house.
Need some walk-up music.
So as they're coming in, I'll do the coming in is, what we'll do is we'll start with, so December 18th, 2024 will be proclaimed Bloomfield High School Football Team Day in honor of the Bloomfield High School Bobcats, winning the 2024 4A state football championship on November 30th, 2024. And I'll read the proclamation to you. San Juan County, New Mexico, resolution number 242541, a proclamation honoring the Bloomfield High School football team. Whereas the Bloomfield High School football team won the 2024 4A state football championship on November 30th, 2024. Whereas the Bloomfield High School Bobcats defeated the St. Pius High School Spartans 62 to 28 at Bobcat Stadium, completing an undefeated 12-0 season. And whereas this championship is the third championship in Bloomfield High School history. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of County Commissioners of San Juan County, New Mexico hereby declares December 18th, 2024 as Bloomfield New Mexico hereby declares December 18th, 2024 as Bloomfield High School Football Team Day in San Juan County, New Mexico, in recognition of their state football championship. So congratulations. And I didn't keep track of the count specifically, but the points for versus against in the state championship was tremendous, or in the playoffs was tremendous.
Congratulations.
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 Good job.
Good job.
Nobody can take it away.
Congratulations. So awesome.
Awesome.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
Good job.
Good job, Coach.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Good inspiration on the voice.
I was like, no.
Congratulations.
I think we'll attempt a picture. I don't know how this is gonna work. Maybe we'll stay up here and you guys can line up this way and--
Absolutely. Fix that way.
Poland's in the back.
Nice way of saying shirts to the front.
Guys live together for the last--
All right, folks, big smiles up here. We're gonna take two or three. Just get comfortable. Start smiling, don't stop. One, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three. And then on this one, yeah? Do it again, more smiles. You're not smiling. Okay. Anybody else here? Smiles. This one's not even for me, this stuff. Okay. Everybody else? All right.
All right.
I already looked at the roster. You know how I do it.
And that's two in three years, right?
Wow, that's awesome.
The seniors are 50 and four.
That's amazing. Something that can never be taken from them, so congratulations.
Well, Mr. Chair, I would move that we pass a resolution honoring the Bloomfield High School Football State Champions of 2024.
Our second. Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Not hearing any. Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any. It passed unanimously. Thank you, sir. Brings us to item number three, consideration of application for variance from the San Juan County Cannabis Regulation Ordinance Number 120 for Faded Leather Farm LLC, 28 Road 3103, presented by Michelle Truby-Tillen. Welcome.
Commissioners, Mr. Chair, Faded Feather Farm LLC submitted a variance petition application to the Community Development Department on September 9th, 2024, seeking a variance from Section 3A of Ordinance 120, the minimum separation distance from a residence. Faded Farm LLC wishes to start an integrated cannabis micro business or an indoor grow operation in a greenhouse located at 28 Road 3103 in Aztec, New Mexico. The proposed grow operation is within 300 feet of two residences, measuring 220 feet and 84 feet from the proposed grow fence. Applicant is seeking a variance to last the life of the business at this location. A public hearing was held before hearing Officer Douglas A. Echols on November 13th, 2024. The request of variance was not opposed by the hearing, at the hearing, correction, by the residents within 84 feet of the proposed grow operation. A second residence within 220 feet away is unoccupied at this time. One resident present at the hearing, whose residence is approximately 500 yards from the proposed location, expressed concern about the potential smell. No negative comments were received by Community Development Department. Hearing Officer Echols submitted written findings and conclusions and recommends the request for variance be granted, subject to the following conditions: installation of a carbon filtration system on the exhaust fan of the greenhouse; follow all requirements of San Juan County Fire and Building Departments; maintain the greenhouse in good condition; the variance be granted for the life of the project or until revoked for non-compliance.
And, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners--
Sorry.
Welcome, Mr. Sawyer. Thank you.
Have we heard this before?
No, I've actually modified my script, just to change it up a bit. But when the commission considers an application for variance from our Cannabis Regulation Ordinance, I like to remind the public that we've advised the commission to avoid asking questions that will elicit new information from the applicant. And the reason for this is that there's already been a hearing conducted by our hearing officer. And so if the commission were to ask additional questions that would bring up new information, it would in effect be re-conducting parts of the hearing tonight at this meeting, and that could potentially violate the due process rights of parties who did not have a notice that a new hearing would be conducted. So out of fairness, the commission will be relying on the evidence gathered by the hearing officer at the cannabis variance hearing to make their decision. And they've also been able to consider comments they've received individually from constituents. So thank you.
Are there any questions, comments? Nope. And I believe I misspoke. I said faded leather. It was faded feather farm. I'll just clarify that. If there aren't any questions, comments, I'll stand for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would like to move for the approval of the request for the application for the variance from San Juan County Cannabis Regulation Ordinance Number 120 for Faded Feather Farm LLC, 28 Road 3103, Aztec, New Mexico.
I'll second.
And, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, are you also implementing the conditions that the hearing officer recommended?
And also to implement the recommendations as stated on there.
Okay, thank you.
Is there still a second?
Still a second.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion, questions? Not hearing any of those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any, I presume that it passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Brings us to item number four, stay right there, consideration of application for variance from the San Juan County Cannabis Regulation Ordinance Number 120 for Primo Buds LLC, 21A Road 3782. Welcome.
Again, do you need to read again, or are we good?
No, I don't think I need to read my disclaimer.
Just make it to this time.
Get up.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Primo Buds LLC submitted a variance petition application to the Community Development Department on August 27th of 2024, seeking a variance for Section 3A of Ordinance Number 120, the minimum separation distance of residence requirement. Primo Buds LLC wishes to become a microbusiness cannabis producer with an indoor grow operation utilizing a greenhouse located at 21A Road 3782 in Farmington, New Mexico. The proposed grow operation is within 300 feet of four residences, measuring 257, 201, 185, and 45 feet respectively from the proposed fence. Applicant is seeking a variance to last the life of the business at this location. A public hearing was held before hearing Officer Douglas A. Echols on November 13th, 2024. The requested variance was not opposed at the hearing by any of the residents within 300 feet of the proposed grow operation. Owners of one residence within the 300 feet submitted a letter expressing opposition. Hearing Officer Echols submitted written findings and conclusions and recommends the request for variance be granted, subject to the following conditions: obtaining a certificate of occupancy or other evidence of satisfactory construction from the San Juan County Building Department; follow all recommendations from San Juan County Fire Department following its inspection; installation of a carbon filtration system to reduce any odor emissions; continued maintenance of the greenhouse in a usable and presentable form; continued compliance with all regulations of the state of New Mexico; the variance shall continue for the life of the project.
Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chair, I'm just curious. I know the complaint about was the odor, and I guess the ones who are putting this said that they'll do an infiltration system, or filtration system, so that'll be, that should handle it?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, yes, that should handle it. It has shown in previous incidences that that's been no problem, and similar to a tour that you all took in Farmington.
That's up, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Sawyer, correct me if I'm wrong, does a letter opposing it have the same weight as somebody being there in person?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner McDaniel, I believe it does. It's still expressing opposition to the variance.
Any other questions, comments?
No.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application for variance from San Juan County Cannabis Regulation Ordinance Number 120 for Primo Buds LLC, 21A Road 3782, Farmington, New Mexico, with the recommendations.
I'll second.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I realize my vote may not count a whole lot, but I'm gonna oppose it. There was a letter. Thank you.
Thank you. The motion carries four to one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us to item number five, consideration of adoption of San Juan County AI policy. James Bean.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I come today to ask to extend our ever-thrilling comprehensive cyber policy with a new policy, which will be an AI policy. The AI policy is to encompass the ever-changing and rapidly developing AI technologies that are currently in use and will continue to be in use in the future. This policy primarily covers what we call generative AI. Generative AI is where we're using AI to create new materials, whether that be text, documents, image, videos, sounds. The policy is really a framework, so we can keep ahead of this. It defines the acceptable AI use, so how we use AI, the data that we put into it, the software that we prove to be used, and also defines how use of AI for county materials should only be done on county networks and county equipment. It lays out how we need supervisor approval for employees to use AI, and in what instances that would be appropriate for them to use AI. It also places ultimate control over AI in the Information Systems Department, where we would approve and vet all AI software before use. It also lays out what end users of AI, what their responsibilities would be, which includes things as checking AI for, or checking output of AI for errors, ensuring that their supervisors are aware that they're using AI, and lays out a IS policy and best practices document, sorry, AI policy and best practices document, which is kind of this ever-evolving document that we have available on our IS service desk that talks about key terms, definitions, as well as the ever-changing AI software approval list. So the idea is that any software that will be in use will have seen, vetted, and approved, and make sure that all the appropriate controls are in place.
Very well. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chair. Mr. Bean, I appreciate the work. I know you guys worked hard on this. Is there anybody else in the state?
So I believe in the state, as far as I can find, we're the first in the state. So there are a few local governments across the United States that have implemented some, notably the city of Timby, but as far as I'm aware, inside of New Mexico, we'll be the first ones to have any analysis.
Well, that's the way I understood it. And I just want to say how much work that you guys and your crew has done, because you're really setting the standard for the rest of the state, all the other counties. And I just, I think that's fantastic that you guys had the initiative to take that on, because that's a big task.
We appreciate it. It's, AI is rapidly developing, and if we don't attempt to get a handle on it now, we could fall behind and open ourselves up to risk and liability. So we want to make sure we get this out covered and produce this policy so we have controls and guardrails in place.
I remember when spell check came in, and I thought that was the greatest thing in the world.
Mr. Chair, I like the ethical consideration on there.
Yes.
Also, personal use authorization. I know that the equipment belongs to the county, and a lot of times, sometimes an employee will misuse it, but here it says that explicit supervisor approval. But people are human, and sometimes they cross that line that could get them fired from their job for misusing it. But I'm glad that, I don't know, stronger language needs to be put in there, because it would be very easy for someone who's pretty knowledgeable to misuse the AI tools, so--
Absolutely. So we do want to make sure that we have those appropriate guardrails in place. Ethical considerations are important. AI is emerging technology, so we do take into considerations things like ethics and bias that can be in place in AI. When we talk about ethics and bias, we're looking at, AI is always going to use its training data to come up with its answers, and it can make assumptions from that data, and we want to make sure that everybody understands that output from AI does need to be reviewed, and does need to be looked at to make sure that we're not taking up anything that could put some risk or liability on the county into account. I do have some examples of how ethics could be, or how it can bias, sorry, how bias can present itself in AI. So if you use AI to examine a group of new hires, if you don't take into account the training data that those new hires could be, it's gonna try to go with trends of previous hires, which could exclude other qualified candidates. We want to make sure people are aware of that. Demographics and information can obviously get skewed, things of that nature. So we really want to drive home having that output being checked for those considerations. For personal use purposes, when we enter into contracts with AI vendors, one of our main concerns is that we keep our county data safe. So we want to make sure that any vendor or any AI service we use has appropriate encryption in place, appropriate data and access controls in place. Because of that, these are more county-centric tools, specifically for county data. But AI tools have a very broad appeal. So we do want to make sure that we have the personal use clause in there, so that way if an employee does wish to use these AI tools for personal use, it would be determined by their supervisor to approve.
Mr. Chair, this is just a comment. There was an individual who, I guess, went to a conference on AI, and she says, "That machine begins to know you more than yourself." So I hope that it's a tool that humans use, but I hope that they'll be, we'll still be in control.
And, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Torricini--
put some risk or liability on the county into account. I do have some examples of how ethics could be, or how it can bias, sorry, how bias can present itself in AI. So if you use AI to examine a group of new hires, if you don't take into account the training data that those new hires could be, it's gonna try to go with trends of previous hires, which could exclude other qualified candidates. We want to make sure people are aware of that. Demographics information can obviously get skewed, things of that nature, so we really want to drive home having that output being checked for those considerations. For personal use purposes, when we enter into contracts with AI vendors, one of our main concerns is that we keep our county data safe. So we want to make sure that any vendor or any AI service we use has appropriate encryption in place, appropriate data and access controls in place. Because of that, these are more county-centric tools, specifically for county data, but AI tools have a very broad appeal. So we do want to make sure that we have the personal use clause in there, so that way, if an employee does wish to use these AI tools for personal use, it would be determined by their supervisor to approve.
Mr. Chair, this is just a comment. There was an individual who, I guess, went to a conference on AI, and she says, "That machine begins to know you more than yourself." So I hope that it's a tool that humans use, but I hope that they'll be, we'll still be in control.
And Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Torecchi, the, the procedure does provide that employee who violate the policy may face disciplinary actions up to and including termination, if it, if it's an extreme example, but, so there, we do have the ability to discipline employees who violate the policy.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question and a statement. Thank you for this, and I've heard one of your presentations, and it's very good, and I'm thinking maybe in the new year, maybe you can present to the commission, the new commission? And just to kind of update us, I think some of us are familiar and some aren't, but I think it would be a good idea to hear more. And then the other thing is, is there gonna be training?
Yes.
Videos?
So we'll actually conduct, the plan is to do quarterly workshops and trainings on the tools that we have decided to use at the county, to make sure that the users of the tools can get the full advantage out of it, as well as avoid some of those pitfalls. Ideally, we want AI to be a tool that we use, we don't want to have it be a final decision-maker, more about using it to enhance our jobs, so we want to make sure our end users are appropriately doing that, and they're checking everything for actually. And of course, the commission is always invited to any of our trainings, and I would love to do a presentation just for the commission.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Chair, I would move that we adopt the San Juan County AI policy, the first AI policy, as presented by Mr. Bean.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any, I presume it passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Brings us to item number six, last item on the agenda, appointment of New Mexico State Senator, District Two, Joe Sawyer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. On September 16th, 2024, Senator, State Senator Steven Neville submitted his resignation from the New Mexico Senate, District Two, effective September 30th, 2024. The Constitution and state statute requires the commission to fill that vacancy. It doesn't put a timeline on when that should happen, so the Board of County Commissioners, when informed of the vacancy, expressed a preference to wait until the results of the 2024 general election came in for that district, to see who the voters chose for that position. And so our Commissioner, Steve Neville, or, I'm sorry, Steve Lanier, was elected to that, to that state senate seat, and, and his term will actually take effect on January 1st, 2025. Now, Mr. Lanier has expressed that he would be willing to take office a few weeks early if the commission decides to appoint him to that District Two Senate seat.
Very well.
No, I don't have anything to say.
And, you know, I, I will say that I feel a little bad for bullying you into letting us appoint you early. No, I, I just, but it, it, it is fitting that it's the last item on, on the agenda, and this is my last meeting, and I wanted to make sure that we did this. I know I was kind of pushing it a little bit, but wanted to make sure that, that you know that, that you have my support, and I think you have the support of the, of this commission in your next step, and I look forward to, to seeing you take that step, and, and I want the last action that, that I take as a commissioner to be to appoint you to the, to the state senate. So that's how I feel about the subject. I'll open the floor for any discussion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we appoint Mr. Lanier.
This is so weird.
Yeah, Senator to District Two.
I, I think you're gonna have to recuse and not, not vote.
I think I will.
My first recuse.
Just throwing that out there. Go ahead and recuse yourself. There's a motion on the floor, do I, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
We have a, we have a, we have a reluctant second. Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any opposition, I presume that it passed unanimously, so.
Well, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thanks for the kind words.
All right, so that brings us to a report from our county manager.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is this a long one? And Commissioners, yes, you know? Because, because...
Wait, wait, I don't, no, I don't, I don't, I'm not sure if you're able to speak anymore.
Being the chairman, we were trying to drag this meeting out as long as we could, so you take as much time as you need on this one. Well, thank you, Commissioner Lanier, or Senator Lanier. Yeah, and I know that our chairman is very fond of long county manager reports, and since this is his last meeting, I'll make sure I don't disappoint. No, I just have two items for you tonight, and actually, just a notice for the next commission. In the odd numbered years, so starting, you know, 2025, obviously, we have to bring forth to you consideration of a property tax rebate to benefit low-income property taxpayers. And so to do that, we need to publish a notice on the paper, and also provide some ads on the radio notifying the public that this would be an item the commission would consider in January. It has to be considered in January, so staff's gonna go ahead and get those notices out like we did two years ago, to make sure we're in compliance with the law between now and January 7th. I bring this to you only because, and looking at the, the calendar ahead, and of course you all will take action, the new, new commission, starting in January, will take action on a open meeting schedule, and if you were to maintain the schedule as it exists, more than likely, the second meeting in January would be in conflict with the New Mexico Counties Winter Conference. So we want to just make sure we're ahead of the game on this, and so I just want to make sure that you know, as we did two years ago, we'd be publishing this, and that that would be an action item for you, for you all to consider, the first, new commission, the first meeting in, in January. And last, we, or the next item, the Mental Wellness Resource Center. I just wanted to remind you all, you took action on this, to rename the Mental Wellness Resource Center, the Navigation Center. And so that's, that's taking place after the new year as well, and we are moving into a new home. We're moving, as you might recall, into the facility provided to us by PMS, as our lease is getting ready to expire in 2025, with hard belief that the Mental Wellness Resource Center has been open almost five years now. But we'll be moving into some great space at the Community Compass, which is right next door to the Farmington Health Center. We will be closed January 9th and 10th, to allow for that move to happen, and then hope is that we'll be open Monday, January 13th, and providing the same services we provide today to citizens in that new location. We'll be working closely, and Mr. Neely has been working closely with PMS on the marketing plan, to make sure we're blasting that information out to our citizenry, and make sure that they're fully aware of this move, and so I just wanted to make sure you were all aware of that, and, and ready for that change in the, in the new year. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman. Very well, very brief. Shortest one in eight years.
Which brings us to reports from department heads. I'll open it up to department heads.
Senator Beckstead, Senator, thank you, Brian Myers, Chief Deputy Treasurer, San Juan County. I'm here before you today as chairperson of the Survey Advisory Committee. I wanted to just inform you all that we have the annual 2024 Satisfaction Survey open. It's been open to the employees since November 20th, and it closes this Friday, December 20th. So far, we have a 40% response rate, which is outstanding, and I wanted to remind the commission that this is the third survey that the Advisory Committee has done. We started with the 2023 Employee Satisfaction Survey, this same time last year, and we had a 52% response rate. And then in April, we did a benefits poll survey. I just want to remind the commission that the response rates that we've had to date, 50%, 40% is unheard of in most organizations. Most organizations see a response rate of around 25%. This speaks to the confidence level, so if you're conducting a survey and you get a high response rate, you can feel comfortable that those responses represent a majority or near majority of the employee population. And that's important to me as chairperson, that the reports that we provide to the commission at timely dates throughout the fiscal and calendar years are well-supported and well-founded. I think that, in my opinion, the reasons for the high response rates are due to the strong culture of communication that San Juan County has fostered through the commission's leadership and also through the county manager's office, so thank you, and I stand for any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other department heads? All right, I'll open it up to elected officials.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I have something, and I just wanted to say, and this will take a little bit of time, so I just wanted to say a few things, so that you didn't leave without knowing how much we appreciate Commissioner Beckstead and Lanier. When you're appointed or elected to the county commission, oftentimes, you've never worked with individuals before, and you may not even know them, so, but Commissioner Beckstead served with my husband, so he had a good track record, and then got to serve with Commissioner Lanier, and it's been a pleasure. So some, a lot of things have been done, but we want to honor and celebrate them for the remarkable service that they've given to our county and their dedication and leadership, John for the past eight years, and Steve for the past four years. They've impacted our community, and we've navigated some challenges together, but it's, we've fostered collaboration and advocated for meaningful changes to set a standard of excellence. The policies and initiatives that you've helped champion have left lasting legacy, strengthened our community, and improved countless lives. And I just wanted to kind of reflect on a few things, as far back as eight years. So for Commissioner Beckstead, in 2017, that period of time was a pretty austere time for the county financially, and then in 2019, the Energy Transition Act came along, so that was really posing some, some concerns about what would happen in our county. And then, as we all know, in February 2020, the MOU with Navajo Nation on Freight Rail was signed, so that was very significant. Then, March of, March of 2020, COVID created a global pandemic and shut things down, so that really created some, some challenges, how the commission operated, and what to do next, throughout our, with the staff and throughout the county. And then in November 2020, like Mr. Stark had mentioned, we opened the, the Mental Wellness Resource Center, and that has really been utilized by a lot of folks in our community. So those are significant accomplishments. In 2021, there was the adoption of the 2022 to 2026 Strategic Plan. Total Theater Renovation Project was completed. The Water Flow Fire Station Project was completed. The Mountain Bike Skills Park and Trailhead Projects completed. Final grant award of $2 million for the build grant for the Four Corners Rail Study, so that was very significant, too. Awarded bids for the East Culpeper Waterline and Kirdland Walk have improvements. In 2022, there was the completion of the 5,000 or 5,500 bridge project, the partnership with the NMSU Extension Office for development of the Growing Forward Farm, and as we saw today, there was even further development for that, for the extension program. In 2023, we hosted the New Mexico County Summer Conference, over 600 county officials from across the state attended, and that was a huge undertaking, and, and we have the staff to appreciate for that. And then the delivery of the Sheriff Office helicopter and the award of the bid for the new hangar. Then, we celebrated three years anniversary of the Mental Wellness Resource Center, and those are just a few of the highlighted accomplishments that have gone on in the last four and eight years. So it's really with appreciation that we've been able to serve and work together and get these things accomplished for our community, and so we wanted to take time to present these to you, and I want to present this to Commissioner Beckstead. Thank you. Okay. So can we take a picture? I don't know, down there? Okay. Oh, yeah.
Heck, yeah, we're dragging this baby out as long as we can.
I want to present this to Commissioner Beckstead for his charity.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, thank you for those kind words, seriously.
All right. Any other elected officials wish to speak?
I'd like to say something. When we went through redistricting, I really appreciate Steve and John for including me, because in the decision, because I lost a lot of chapters in District One, and it went over to Gary, and I only have four Navajo chapters, and he has...
14.
14 of them. But with our lawyer's help, and with the commission standing together, we, we tried to argue as best as we could, and even with Tanya's statistics, but, but that was decided. But I really appreciate, I know I connect with Steve because we're future, I mean, we're former high school teachers, and I always think of him whenever, whenever I hear about, like, there was a shooting at another school in Wisconsin, and I know that he saw a lot, and he, he's, he's gonna help us a lot in the state. And John was very kind, when I had my car broke down, and it was in the shop, and he even offered to loan me a vehicle. But anyway, I was able to have a vehicle from my brother, but that's the kindness that you create with people when you work with them, and we all cared about each other. So thank you, John, and thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other elected officials?
I have one.
I don't, I think you have to wait for the comments input from the general public.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm not much of a golfer. I'm pretty bad at golf. So John and I and Mike, we always team up with Mike because he's a good golfer. So on John's birthday, I give him a box of balls, golf balls. We lost those by the third hole. I had to borrow, I had to borrow some of those, so I apologize, I should have done that. So I thought, well, the only place that I could help you with your game, me being so bad, was a golf club, so. I took his putter away from him. This might be part of the issue we have with, and Mike has to carry it. And my grandson's sitting over there going, "That's my club." No, seriously. I didn't get you one. His putting is horrendous.
It is terrible. And I, you know, you came with props and everything. Thank you.
Wow, I didn't think I was going to get a putter out of this.
I know, that's why. I almost got kicked out of Dick's over that, just by the way. I hope she's not here. The gal told me I could only putt on the little practice green.
You were up and down the.
Yeah, I was doing it nonehow. She finally come up and said, "Sir, you're going to have to go back to the green." I was having fun.
Well, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Any other elected officials?
I got to swear him in as judge, and anyway, they did a good job, so thanks again, guys. Now I get to see him go, so anyway, best of luck.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
I normally don't take time during the elected officials, but I think I have to. I, this has been, and here I go, this has been such a great adventure. And with all, with all adventures, there's all kinds of characters that you, and people that you interact with. And it, it wouldn't have been as fun of an adventure had I not had the people that I had around me. To all my fellow commissioners, thank you. Thank you for your service to the county. Thank you for your input, your guidance. It, it really is and wasn't as appreciated. I, you know, to the, to the former commission that I was on had great mentors there to, and quite frankly, a great county manager who always makes his commissioners look good, no matter what. And the great job that he does is highlighted onto us. And oftentimes, we, we get the, the recognition when frankly, he should. He, he does a great job, and don't know what kind of commissioner I would be without you. So thank you for your leadership and, and all that you do for the commission and for this county and for the citizens of the county. To all of the employees of the county, such a great team. It, it astounds me on a regular basis, the, the efforts that people put into serving the people of our county. And the employees, I, I think they're the base of, of, of all that, that we do, especially as, as a commission. I, I know the, the two commissioners-elect are here. I want to congratulate them and, and welcome them. I'm, I'm confident that they're going to, to step in. Well, I know for sure Sandra's going to step in and do a great job, or.
Better.
In comparison, so.
I agree.
And no, Sam, Sam was one of the first people that, that I spoke to when I decided to run for county commission eight years ago. And I wet behind the ears, go wobbling into Los Hermanitos to go into his Denver Broncos den and beg him for money to, to help with my campaign. And he's like, "Who are you?" And that was a start of, of a great friendship, and, and I, I know you're going to do a great job. Appreciate you, appreciate your friendship and, and everything that, that you do and that I know that you're going to do for the county. Have some family here. My mother's here, I guess to see me off on my, for, for my last meeting. My girlfriend and, and her family are here. It means so much to me, and, and I appreciate everybody who's helped me along the way. And here's to new things, and I, I think there's, there's other things in the future. I, I may have some plans already, but I'll keep those close to, close to the vest for now. But I, I enjoy and love serving and, and being able to do this, and look forward to the day when I get to do it again. So it's, it's not goodbye, it's see you for the next adventure, and hopefully you all can come along with that as well. So thank you.
Minus my mother. I didn't bring my mother, did I?
All right, that brings us to comments input from the general public. Comments are accepted in person, limited to three minutes, and to subjects the commission has not previously discussed, or formal action has not been taken. No formal action will be taken at this meeting that relates to comments or input from the general public. You're welcome to come up and we'll, can we move the lectern if, if there's anybody that wishes to speak? Not, not seeing anybody come up and.
Could I get you to say? No, it's yours. No, I'm willing to.
Having exhausted the agenda, declare this meeting adjourned.